What we're going to do is, is I'll start and talk about a few city issues. And then I ask our elected, not our supervisors or our city council, but our state elected officials to comment on those. And then we'll let the county raise a couple of issues and just go that way. It's going to be fairly informal. And our three issues probably won't surprise you. And the one, first one, maybe the most important one right now is the backfill. The commercial property tax backfill, and that impacts the county too. And we understand it's in the governor's budget, and we've heard good news. And then this morning I heard maybe the news wasn't so good. So we'd like you to give us your thoughts on that. A second issue is, of course, the traffic cameras.
The competing bills, one to ban them, one to regulate them. Your thoughts on that? And can the never ending effort to water down TIFs? That seems to happen every single year. So I would just like to go around the table with our state elected officials and give us your perspectives on the backfill, the cameras, and TIF. And...
How's he going to vote? Sometimes we don't ask him. And you said, "Ask him."
Johnny, so backfill. We made a promise. And at the time, Speaker Paulson was there, Terry Bradson was there, and I'm on. And all of them are gone. And so I think most of the people in this room that are state elected officials realize that we don't fulfill that promise. Property tax, you know, can only squeeze the town purse too so much. So I will vote in favor of continuing the backfill. Now, the rumor has been that President of the Senate, Jack Birney, was heard on a radio show saying that it will gradually go away, or he doesn't support it. So I think it would be contact some of the Republicans. The Senate, I told them how important it is. They're doing that, they're doing that, they're trying to let them know how important it is. I have, Tyawata especially in my district, really, is really, you know, really needs their budgets, their budgets tight. They don't have a lot, they don't have a lot of resources, although they've done a great job. So, and so they need to, they need that one to bounce. Your second one was, you voted against and you had to try to cut some things. And the third one, I've only heard rumors. I have a bill in draft. About how TIF will be changed. There are two representatives in the House who have it out for that. Tom Sands is very important, but there are a couple of other representatives who want to change that and really alter it in many ways. So keep our eyes on it. I don't know what it looks like, but I would first take a look at that before I would say that I would vote on it. I don't want to see any abuse of TIF. In my old district, I saw two or three cases of TIF abuse. And so I want to hold my cards close to that to kind of remember.
I'll go back to Rock Hill, State Senator. Send the thirty-three, most of the east side of Cedar Rapids and the southeast side of Cedar Rapids. Just so you, I mean, the immediate issues in front of legislature so far are the mid-year budget cuts and a couple of observations on that. First of all, not sure it's necessary. We've got over $600 million in our reserve accounts. And it seems to me if you've got over $600 million in reserve accounts, not a good idea to try to squeeze budget cuts into the last four months of a fiscal year. And they are quite serious for universities, community colleges, court corrections, human services. So just, so you're thinking about that. Second immediate issue is going to be school funding. Last night, yesterday, the Senate Education Committee, I think the House Education Committee as well, brought out a 1 percent bill, and they're going to tout that as $32 million, which of course to any person sounds like a lot of money, because $32 million for an individual is a lot of money. But when you spread that across all our students in the state, it's less than 40 cents per student per day. And so you think about, well, what is that? School able to do, a classroom of 30, what are you able to do with your extra $12 a day? Right? So those are the immediate issues that are in front of legislature, probably going to be voted on next week. We had been told we were going to vote on the deappropriation bill on Tuesday, and we were told we were going to vote on it on Thursday. And it's really unnecessary. So you should take a look at that. On the three issues, the backfill, that was part of the deal. To have the backfill, we shouldn't undo the deal. If we're going to undo the deal, we should think about undoing some of the tax cuts that were given. That's my position. I'll vote for the backfill. Traffic cameras, to me, they've always been a public safety tool. Why would you take away a public safety tool? If you want to regulate it, to make sure it really is a public safety tool, regulate it so it's really a public safety tool. But don't take the public safety tool away. And TIF, you know, that's a perennial. We gave a really good run in 2004, right? We really, Farm Bureau was behind it. And so there was a lot of momentum by person. And we didn't do anything that year. I just can't imagine anything happened to TIF. So I, there are parts of TIF reform that, I can't tell you how I'd vote because it would depend on what it is, right? Because there are some things in TIF reform I think make sense, and there are things I don't think make sense. And if you'd like more information on that, you have to address that later. Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Senator. I'm Liz Bennett from State House District 65. So some of you may not know, that's the Mountain View area, most of the southeast side of Cedar Rapids, Nuvo, Check Village, and right around Wilson Avenue. So I appreciate the opportunity to hear from you all today. I'll just go right to it and address the three issues that have been brought up, because my state senator here did a really great job giving an overview of our main issues that we're looking at this year. So regarding the backfill, I think the state should keep its promises. I don't think that you should undo part of the deal. I think that's disingenuous, and that should not be done. I also support appropriate public safety use of traffic cameras. And we'll, we're kind of keeping an eye on any bills regarding TIF. You know, like Senator Mathis said, we want to see what the bill is personally before I make a statement on it. But, you know, we'd be watching anything like that with an eye on how that would affect our communities. Thanks.
Yes, and next up, State Representative Ashlyn Hinson. I am on appropriations committee, so I can tell you what we're facing as far as the commercial property tax backfill goes is a very big rural-urban divide. I think that your urban-city people understand the benefits of keeping the commercial property tax backfill. There's a large rural but narcocas who I don't think understands the implications of doing away with that and what that does for commercial property tax development. So we're flushing that out right now. I'll do whatever I can to help keep the backfill going. I can't guarantee it because there's, again, there's been discussions about that, I'm going to be honest. And I know that we have quite a contingent who feels that it should go away. So I don't want to sugarcoat that at all. Traffic cameras, I actually am the bill manager, I think, going forward for the traffic camera regulation bill. So that's super exciting. I ran it through transportation this week. And it was, I think we had majority, I think only one person voted against it, so we got through committee. The goal is to get at least that conversation going so that we can, so we can have a debate over whether or not we should regulate or ban. And my argument is going to be, hey, let's see how these regulations go first before we go with an all-out ban. So that's kind of the approach I've been taking with fellow members, and just making sure they consider what the regulation bill does, which provides strict calibration regulations and, you know, you have the right to confront your accuser, because a police officer actually has to issue the ticket. So some of those things that I think counter a lot of the arguments on the side of banning them are in the bill that regulates them. So I, I think I'm actually taking over floor management of that bill. Shouldn't make it to the floor. TIF, I actually talked to the representative, Nick Blue from Medco had actually reached out to me. And he, he said it was a bill, I think, out of, well, Gary Moore, who's representative out of Quad Cities, was the one who filed the bill in the House. So I went up to Gary and I asked him, "Well, what's your intention in filing this bill? And what are you hoping to do?" And he basically said, "Well," especially in his area, "they have seen an abuse of TIF. So it's not been used correctly." A whole, I guess he called it a neighborhood, but a whole area came to him and basically said, "You need to do something about this." So that was the genesis of where that came from. His, his goal is to get TIF to be about its original intent, which is reducing light and creating jobs and economic development. So now that I know what his goal is in accomplishing that, maybe we can work through that. As Senator Howe was mentioning, there may be some things we need to look at with reform, but I don't think his bill's the right way to do it. So I don't anticipate that, taking any major hurdles forward. I don't think there's support for that, but that's where I stand.
You all voted as a lasting development tool since TIF.
Yeah. And Nick sent out, I would add one more thing. Nick sent out a great video explaining TIF, and I think that can be a useful tool as well, because I, I think a lot of people don't understand how it works. And so making sure that gets out to the necessary parties who can then advocate for it and, and its use as an economic development tool, I think, would be advantageous.
Well, it's not, it's not every year when we ask, you're in and three decisions, and we're going to, I think, as I mentioned, well, I think very quickly I'll turn it over to the county. There are a few issues that we may have some time to handle. Do you have it for me?
Okay. We are happy to be here. Thank you all for coming and listening to us. I'm John Harris. I'm the, this year's chair of the board of supervisors. I'm going to cover a little bit of backfill. We'll have, after that, Ben Rogers will be talking about mental health and tiered medications. And Jim Howser will talk about our legislative opinions on opioids. I asked our, our budget director a week ago how she was treating the backfill, and she said, "Well, our legislators and our governors promised us that the next fiscal year we're going to get our backfill. So I put it all in our budget. So we're relying on that promise. And if something looks like it might not happen, gosh, I wish you'd call me right away because she'll take the news pretty badly." Next, mental health.
So again, I just wanted to, this is going to be a, for the city, when we originally scheduled the, let's say that's due to this, we can kind of get to know each other, and the mayor, the city manager, very quick to point out, we haven't really gotten to know each other. Our new, our new council of all five members, so while you are all doing relationship building, you know, amongst your councils, really, it's not a, for us to meet, not that we do so more frequently on our shared issues. Mental health is one of those services that cities don't apply, but counties do. And oftentimes, that is something that the public doesn't necessarily understand. And I like to frame the counties being the safety N for safety. So there's two mental health issues that I've spoken with the municipal legislators here today, when we were in Des Moines earlier this week. The first one has to do with the mental health levy, and just asking for equity within the levy to allow counties and regions to really provide the adequate level of funding that they believe is necessary to provide, quote, the core number plus services. And as you're aware, through legislative changes, our region, the mental health region, we can, we can only have a fund balance of 20 percent, and we have to spend down our fund balance by 20 or 30 or 20 percent. So that's spending a lot of, that's spending fund balance dollars relatively quickly. And we were just asking for some greater flexibility to be able to either retain more of a fund balance or spend it down, a little more time to spend it down, so we're not rushing. The one issue I really want to spend time on is this issue of tier rates. And Liz can also really jump in and help me with this. As you're aware, we manage care organizations, have set these tier rates for people with disabilities based on a, it's called a system assessment, and it was support...
Supportive intensity scale.
Supportive intensity scale. And this is originally designed to help understand and address the need of the individual, not set a reimbursement rating for providers, but that is how it's being used. So individuals with a disability, let's say someone who goes to the art, or someone who goes to county, they're interviewed with two individuals that know that person for at least three months, so to be a family member, a case manager. And they ask them a bunch of questions, standardized questions. Based on that, then they are given a CISCOR, and based on that CISCOR, they are then put into a tier rate. It's come to our understanding that the MCOs have, for whatever reason, moved certain questions out of the CISCOR that could relate to certain medical issues, or other questions that they feel could add to an individual's CISCOR, which may mean that the person has got to a higher tier, or a higher... Our argument with this is several. One, we are seeing at Options, at R, and Systems Unlimited, that people with higher levels of need are going to put lower tier rates. And that's putting a great pressure on providers to be able to provide those services. What is most alarming is that for an individual to have their tier rate or their CISCOR reconsidered, they have to apply to the very, they have to appeal to the very organization that has already either denied their rates or put them in a lower level tier with the MCO. We feel that is a blatant conflict of interest. We look to have that removed from MCO control and placed in DHS, so, so that it's much more of an appeal process and not have this conflict of the person setting the rate also being the person who's denying it. To put that in perspective, the tiered rates at Options of Lake County, we're looking at a shortfall annualized at about $750,000, or about $70,000 a month, where we have high needs population put in these lower tiers. And we're seeing that system why. And what I'm fearful of is that organizations like Lake County's Options, at R, Systems Unlimited, others will start to deny care or stop providing services to people in certain tier rates. And they are already, we're looking at $750,000, and R is looking at over $40,000. Systems Unlimited is 1.5 million, I think, they system at grand. And so they'll look at the population of people within these tiers, and these are people who are not, can't be associated independently, maybe not be able to work based on the level of their disability. And if Options is unable to provide those services, R, Systems Unlimited, really the only place they have is home. And now you're, or by a level of care or a replacement that is not appropriate for their disability. And now you're, now you're putting pressure on families to decide which ones stays home for, or what do they, what, what arrangements do they have to make to look after their level?
And if they have...
And if they have, and then they sometimes don't, just given their age. So we're seeing this in that tier rating, that conflict is really something that I think there could be legislative, I would look forward to your support on removing that conflict of interest, placing a tier rating here to the DHS.
We have a bill. We filed a bill that addresses not only the assessment, but it also addresses the appeal and also addresses the conflict of interest.
You authored that bill?
Amanda Raven, I did. Yeah. Whoever, yes, sponsor.
Does that bill include funding for the case managers? Remember, recently, uh...
It doesn't include any case management appropriation. It's more about the rules around how they're doing the assessment, how you can appeal their decision. And also, the GAO, federally, just came out with a report in January, it was mid-January, that was talking about the conflict of interest with case management. And, and they sent out a warning, basically, I read it as a warning, to Department of Human Services all across the country, and something like I don't know, medical groups, to examine the managed care operations, see if this is being done, and take corrective action for it. So I saw that report, and I forwarded it to Jerry Foxhoven and to her government liaison, and said, "Why, it is important to do a half of this." And my grand old husband, he knew as well. Haven't heard anything back yet. But we are also, I don't know if you read the paper today, we've asked CMS, Centers for Health Medicare and Medicaid Services to come and, and do a field, a field reporter that studied, like I did in December of 2015, or, you know, about three days before Medicaid was to, or managed care was to be developed. So we've had repeated conversations with them on conference calls, urging them to come, and finally had a little bit of a breakthrough. And they said, "If you can show us data that is conflicted to what we've been receiving from managed care organizations filtering through IME, then we would consider coming." So you got to do something right. And so I think one of those areas that they're looking at is this assessment and the conflict of interest, that piece around it. So here's an example. I had a call from a woman who works for a law firm here in town. She's a district assistant, and she has a brother who is at Options. And she got a phone call from United Healthcare. The woman identified herself as a case manager, but not in particular her brother's case manager. Asked her a series of questions, didn't tell her what the questions were about. And the woman just thought, oh, she was inquiring about his case management. And so she answered the questions, and a couple of days later, Options called her and said there was a woman from United Healthcare who had a iPad and asked her brother to sign something, you know, on the iPad. And it was this assessment. So she was, they're not following protocol. And so the woman works for a law firm, so she went to one of the lawyers and said, "This is what just happened." So they called United Healthcare, and they said, "Well, that person will not be on your person's case then." So she said, "Well, what happens? Is this an assessment? You know, tell us what's going on." Well, there's, they're going to get back to her. So it's that kind of practice that we're not seeing uniform practice. And as you said, there should be two people in the room. Is it someone who has a power of attorney? Is it a custodian? Is it, you know, a parent? And is it clear that when they're doing this assessment, that they're explaining everything to that person to say, "And we're going to take this, your information, and we're going to apply a score to it"? They're not explaining it as they should.
Senator Mathis, linking to your attitude to this issue. What I believe, Council's progress right now of commercial appropriations, case management, is that what I've been seeing, and I have a witness, what I've been seeing with the act of CEO system and privatization of this care, is that it's had a field impact on our case management and corporate decision. And so in addition to the trauma that many of these individuals are experiencing due to their development in the facility, we've seen case managers that have been with folks in this community for years, decades, in some cases. And that is a traumatic experience for, we have the county that have to toward these cost impacts and make, just this week, we had to make a little tough decision about the future of our case management system. That, that's a real loss for folks. So I know this is asking to, perhaps with the amount, I know you're for this, many constituents, but I have encouraged you all as state legislators to strongly encourage the governor and others to take a hard look at what the privatization of the services that affects the people in the case management system. It is expensive, and we're feeling a cumulative burden.
Our case managers went from 40, 40 individuals to 18 in effective March versus shut, closing down the complete case management program. Yesterday, I was in Des Moines, and Jerry Foxhoven was there to speak before the statewide county supervisors meeting. And I brought up the CISCOR, and he blamed the providers for the inappropriate places of the clients in the, within the CISCOR. And he completely skittered around the fact of my questions being eliminated in different, different ways that the CISCOR was being, for being assessed. So I don't know if he's missing form or consists his message out to us when we, when we complain about how the clients are evaluated. But he blamed the process.
Traditionally, the, the way that you're prepared by the county on this issue, when it comes to the economics of the case management piece, that, that state, they need so much money because they make sure that that patient is under vest. And when they're not under vest, they're in the library, or they're in the bus station. And we get calls for service to the police department. They end up in jail, or they end up in an hospital, simply because they're in the managed property, like they used to be four, five years ago. So appreciate what you're remotely dear, trying to do, but there's really, I mean, great repercussions that all of us share. And if we just had a little bit of money, you're talking about, it would make this process so much...
Well, it's also the quality of life, and the path of life is case management. Yeah. Mike wasn't senior enough, well, you've had to do a layoff, layoff of our case managers because of legislative changes that don't allow us to really keep the program going. So, you know, Mike was a great advocate for that, and understands his needs, and someone like Lynn Pearson, who's already severe and profound, who's a little severe and profound with disabilities, and has, yeah, has had her case manager for 24 years. Now is going into some other case manager, United, who was just recently hired, and had not had any case management experience, and has a case load that really doesn't allow them to focus on the people they're employing services for.
We had a case manager at Link County for 30 years, and had the same clients for that length of time.
And, you know, I think the global view of this is that, I've said this a thousand times, the philosophy around managed care is actually, in its purest form, a good idea. We've seen hospitals start doing this, you know, at the beginning of the ACA, and the ACA, and then to, to provide health homes, and managed care start doing that, and they have. And so I think where we have a disconnect in our managed care across the state is, number one, it was rushed through. Number two, the bill in report that DHS and IME is blaming on, you know, somebody on problems around reimbursement. Number three, I think the issues are, that are not being addressed, are around service and money. You know, it's those two things. So in order for them to cut costs, they have to cut services.
That's what Jerry says, yes, because there's a plan like pot of blood. People are living on it, or people are only expected to live to maybe be three years old, 10 years old, and all of them in their 50s and 60s and 70s, and even up into the 80s. The basis is such that more people than the program is sustaining. And in order for the program to be sustainable, you have to look at a way of cutting the costs, and that means cutting services.
So you can imagine that the managed care organizations, you get your case managers saying, "Oh, this is, they've worked for 30 years, look at the salary that they're getting, the benefits they're getting. We're going to go in and we're going to grab them. And we're going to, we're going to hire a bunch of people, and then we're going to thin the herd. And we're going to offer this much money, and we can do this because we're a company. Our benefits are going to be nominal compared to what the counties might be, you know, I mean, at price." And so that's where they can make their margins. They feel that they might be able to offer comparable services, but those on the other end don't feel that that's comparable. It's interesting that Jerry Foxhoven would turn that around, and because in all actuality, DHS and IME were supposed to be doing assessments all along. And if he feels that there's, there are some complications with the assessments that are being done now, what were we doing before? And were we doing them on a regular basis? And were we doing them with check and protocol?
Lincoln was recognized up in Minneapolis-St. Paul, National Association's County Conference Carback in nineteen ninety-two. No, it was even before that, it was like ninety-one or ninety-two. For our case management program was one of the ones that was recognized as the best in the whole United States. And so, we've been doing case management for years.
Do you have opiates?
Yes, I know you guys are working on opiates. We're starting up a task force here in Lynn County to address the issue, trying to be a better, trying to get people into treatment and trying to prevent any more unnecessary deaths. We'd have about thirty so far last year that were all attributed to opioid. And so, anything that could be done for us to help us with some funding, this funding is gonna be the key to the success of our program.
We've had some key partnerships, I sit on the Board of Public Health as well. We've talked extensively about this issue. Board of Public Health is aggressively lobbying for a help with this PMP system prescription letter, which would help doctors be able to identify someone who's trying to doctor shop.
We just passed through some of the.
My only concern with that going forward is that other states that have done that have seen very low involvement in that, or participation. So, compelling them to take that next step is the biggest challenge.
That is exactly what Dr. Levett, who also sits on the board of public health, said, if you guys are gonna implement this system, you gotta identify in front of.
Whereas we teach them, if you don't participate.
Both of our hospitals are implementing that program within their organizations, because they're hooked up on their medical records and they find a way.
And while this isn't a preventative measure, we're lucky enough to find some funding to outfit our sharing these way with NARQ, which is, if you want, all lives is deprived. One life that they can save, supervisory services that I talked about, is that the route I wanna go, the one that's more heavily implemented side? And the answer is yes, but these are measures that could save a life and have a crisis that we find reportable, so.
And NARQ is just becoming more and more expensive now. There's states that have laws around no prosecution, around people shooting up with someone, codes. It's NARQ and that type. And so, we passed that about two years ago, I think, with some differences in the prosecution. I think across the country, NARQ is getting more expensive. And then they want a NARQ that's talked about, a lot like the EpiPen that talks about, you know, so that once you object it, it gets you instructions on how to object it. And then prices have gone sky high because of.
And insurance, you know, won't pay for the treatment. Those secret nurses get to be able to treat them. You don't have to pay for it by insurance, not having any self, self-pay so they stay in treatment. That's what they're gonna say, why is this getting people to treat them?
Except treatment facilities, you certainly see the pressures of the MCOs and their reversion may not be able to accept certain people in the treatment. This is a system-wide impact.
Yep. Hey, what do you think you guys can do, personally, for those three issues?
God, I'm surprised, I just.
On those three issues, well, we talked about the backfill.
Was both of us treating the backfills important?
Yes, I know. On the, on the mental health, MCO disability issues, I mean, I, I went out to Options, visited, it'd be nice to fix that situation because it just, I don't, I'd be, it'd be really sad for, for Lynn County and C-Rapids to lose options, right? I mean, that's.
We're serving two hundred clients.
I'm struck by, so you've now, you have, you've made the decision, no more case managers.
Because those case managers for fee-for-service will be taken and housed at DHS.
And that's here.
Right, and that the law is set to be projected. Those dollars were trying to use towards other parts of options or services that may not be derived.
Uh, you know, that's not good. And that just more, the more general discussion is, I still, I mean, we, we are down, I mean, we're down this path where, with the mismanaged managed care deal. And, you know, we've got providers that last I've known, they continue to talk to me, and economic alliance might wanna look at this. And we've got a lot of providers who are really kind of on the margin. And we've gotta have, we've gotta have a discussion about how we're gonna make a safety net work, right? I mean, you gotta have a safety net. And, I mean, it is, it is in tatters. I just don't, I mean, I look at, I look at it legislatively right now, and I know Senator Mathis has just been banging away at this and doing a great job on that, and I support it with those efforts. And I just look across the aisle and it's kinda like, I mean, it's just, what's the strategy, out of sight, out of mind, and just ignore it? And so, it's, it's a human tragedy for the people involved. And then you've got all these people, I mean, this is, healthcare is what? In this metro, what wears a rank in terms of our big industries, right? I mean, this is, we're talking about one-fifth, one-sixth of our overall economy. And I, I don't see answers coming from the other side. I just don't, I mean, it's, and, and.
Well, can I try for just a second?
Yeah, and you should, and please, I'm just, on the, on the Senate side, I just don't see interest or understanding or engagement. I really don't.
And I'm not even on the committee that handles it, but I have had two meetings with Jerry Foxhoven and Randall in the last two weeks. And so, I think that there are people who are interested parties in making sure we find some fixes here because we are hearing, I mean, Jim, we met, what was in December, and I'm, I'm hearing it from a lot of people about the tiered grades, so I brought that up. I got the same answer you did, but that's not good enough, in my opinion. So, I, there are, there are, are a group of people who are interested in working towards some solutions in the House and in the majority party, and I'm sure in the minority party too. So, I don't think that's an accurate characterization to say that nobody cares about it or doesn't have an idea. They're working on it. And I know Dave Eaton, who is the chair of our HHS budget, it's a personal priority for him to, to make sure that we get these things fixed. So, I, I'm not meaning to diminish the problems at all, but I'm just saying that there are people who are working on it.
I mean, Representative Hansen, I'm, I'm just, on the Senate side, you have a, a leadership team there that just decided as part of their mid-year budget cuts to triple the cuts to human services. And I know Director Foxhoven wasn't nuts about losing three point three million. And I know he really is not, and that's about losing nine point nine million, okay? And you just, I, I look for some sort of reaction, right? From Segabart, from Costella, from Dicks, from Schneider. I look for any kind of reaction and I just don't see it. I mean, Representative Eaton clearly cares, right? Has been engaged, retiring, right? But on the, on the Senate side, I just look, I just don't, there's just no, no comprehension. So, it's gotta come, it either gotta come from the House Republicans, it's gotta come from the governor's office. I'm not sure I see it in the governor's office. So, it's a politically a fix to this, seems problematic when you're dealing with a chamber that their action, their perceived budget situation, triple the cut to human services.
At, at, I don't mean to wax too literally here, but at, at that point, do we start questioning whether or not the privatization of services is available? At what point does that become a real consideration?
One of the things that I got feedback from my meeting with the director was that they are, they are looking at getting actual work groups together to get feedback on that level, that micro level, and then come up with some recommendations out of that. So, I think that's a great opportunity to, I mean, obviously, we've got a lot of public feedback, but they're, they're looking at forming some, and I don't know if they talked about this at the meeting yesterday or not, but forming some actual work groups to, to come up with some solutions. So, I see that as a positive step. I don't see it as a fix, but that's, that's the answer I have for that is that I, I have faith in that they are trying to fix it from the ground level up.
Jerry mentioned yesterday that we're not turning back. And he said, we were at thirty-nine states and now we're up into the forties, the number of states that are going to managed care.
And that's quite many, but.
Yeah.
And thinking of managed care in the state of Iowa for many years, under Magellan.
Case managers, case manager.
We've had case managers for years.
And where did all that data go? I asked at the first oversight meeting a year and a half ago. So, I would assume when you designed this plan, wrote this RFP, you used the data that was collected from Magellan through all of these years. What historical evidence there is, and it's evidence-based practice, right? So, of course, you could use that to redesign, you know, Medicaid. Silence.
No, when we were there, two days, three days ago, Supervisor Harrison, Rogers, and myself, Mr. Assistant Darren Gadyus, Senator Dickson, said, he gave us an indication that, that backfill was gonna be starting to be phased out in fiscal year nineteen. So, that's what we took away from that meeting. We were, we were, we were in that, that backfill may start being eliminated next year and after our budgets are certified.
On a different topic, Mr. Mayor, is there any, like, kind of, the county's taking some precious time as it relates to mental health as a chip? Are there any economic development updates that you can give both the county and the legislators or the county on an, an, a way to flood all the protection? Because I think this whole gap has been really beneficial. If I were asked blindly, what are the top three issues of the city? I don't know if I would've been able to accurately list what has been discussed today, and vice versa, if they would've been able to, the city necessarily to name our top three there. And that's why this is so great. Are there other issues other than what's been discussed that people like to share, relates to their own development or regulatory lines or tangentially flood protection?
Well, certainly flood protection is, is continues to be a really big issue for us. I studied right now, but maybe the state, probably will be in the future, but we're continuing to work, our government is making some new efforts there to get, shake loose eighty million dollars, seven, two million dollars we are gonna try to get from the federal government. Streets are a big issue, of course, and almost basic things that we have. So, I think the issues that I brought up in the beginning are the things that the backfill and the death of the cameras are what we really wanted to talk with our delegation about today. I do wanna give the economic alliances a chance to ask a question to make a few comments, since they hosted this today and they represent all of us.
Thank you, Eric. I didn't need to do this, certainly the easiest thing we can do is turn on the lights and make sure the soup is hot, like that will, no problem. That will, but give you two minutes to talk, I'll start at eight-five. And really quickly, just reiterate a couple of things that were said upfront. I mean, legislators, I'm not sure that every region has it. It's easy, you get to have a meeting with the city, with the county, with the economic development group, and labor in the room as well. And almost all of these issues, we largely agree. So, you can be, I mean, you'll hear a little different, maybe the, the topic of the list is different. So, cities might start to talk about the safety cameras, but we all share those opinions. Certainly, the county has always led on events of health. But we certainly all share those opinions. In our space, the easiest place to find common ground is getting tech that we're growing, right? If we're growing things and building things, making successful businesses, adding jobs, we're almost always gonna have unanimous consent on that stuff. So, a lot of our agenda items are always in that space. I think the, the thing that we are talking most about, and you all already know this, you've been very welcome to our events and have been very accessible to us. I think we get to be the spokespeople for tax credit programs, some of which tend to be controversial. I think certainly in the mainstream, there are some programs that can be misunderstood or against one or two bad actors, one or two bad examples, makes it challenging for all of us to continue to use those. But much like the TIV discussion, there are preciously few economic development tools for us to use. On the published rates especially, and to a lesser degree, I mean, the effective rates, our tax code is nearly as competitive as some other tax codes in the country who are competing for, for industry. But we do have some very effective programs. With tax credit programs, you could talk about, there are dozens and dozens and dozens of tax credit programs in the state code. And I think, again, while we have sort of been very intentionally not been like, oh, pick on that guy's tax credit, and we are pointing those out. IME, no doubt, that you can find tax credit programs that don't have return on investment, that, that, that don't provide value, that don't drive, I can't unquote. We've really tried to focus our advocacy around seven, that we can demonstrably from the break of dawn till the end of the day, show you our, our having a significant return on investment. And, and we focus a lot on those. And we've got local programs too. I mean, I think sometimes this stuff can be a bit of an academic exercise when you're talking about code language, but to, to use current events, to use the newspapers of the last week and say, Frank Hector talked about the fact that without some of the incentive programs that went into, into their expansion, then expansion would not have been possible. Maryland Expansion Project just was in the last, just was in the last week. Those kind of things can be very real examples. Please rely on us when you need those examples. I know those are helpful to you as well, right? To try to bring this, equate this to real dollars, to real companies, to real people. So, we're here, workforce housing tax credits, historic preservation tax credits, the two sixty E and two sixty programs. Again, and you use the code language, a lot of people don't know what those are. The job retreating stuff happening through her code is, is, is helpful and historically has been helpful to literally hundreds of businesses in, in the metro area, et cetera. We're here as a resource and we hope that you use us as you get into some of these, pretty, what could be a pretty challenging conversation since it's tax credit programs.
Excellent question, Representative Duncan. So, the tax credit program, in order to transition to a bigger rock and what your future plans are, and I know the tax credit issue has been very important to them, so for the benefit of the legislators, I mean, I mean, it's a reformation of that specifically with our largest supporter, Naomi.
Harley.
It was about how even tinkering with that reformation and a decision that they're.
Very briefly, certainly research and activities tax credit is one of the more controversial, particularly the refundability. And Rockwell, Kenny, it's lumped into the big three with Jupiter and Beer. How they get a check, how is that, how is that, how is that fair? And then it sometimes goes a little bit beyond that and people start getting too far away with the facts, like they don't pay any taxes. The fact that they don't have any state income tax liability doesn't mean that they don't pay any taxes. Ask the city of C-Rapids if Rockwell pays taxes. Enormous property tax bill, right? So, certainly, they're a tax-paying entity, nine thousand jobs in East Ohio, most of those are here in C-Rapids. And interestingly, when you start to think about where my jobs go, not interstate has, research activities tax credit is one of the assets that not interstate has, or internalized has. You know, where are, where are the other places where some of our research jobs could potentially shift in? Some of the most logical places that Rockwell potentially jobs have some of those, some of those synergies. So, it just.
Yeah, when you brought up the urban, we're all split, and it's part of analysis, your cox.
Yeah, it is.
When, it's easy for those who don't, your districts, they don't have to worry about this, tinker with this and stuff, but this is, you know, your district, my, my district, everybody's district in this room has numbers, scores of employees that, you know, are surrounded as well. They're trying to make a decision on citing, or think of changing around the major, this, this year around the.
And I think it was made pretty clear that that's not on the, I mean, I think we always should be looking at them. Obviously, like you said, Doug, there are probably, probably several we can find that are not effective anymore. But I know last year, the bill that was filed, that created quite the hubbub, I guess, in terms of looking at that, that tax credit specifically. Rockwell came back and said, okay, well, you wanna do something with this? That's fine, but we'll work with you on maybe what that looks like. So, they're coming to the table, actually. I have a business council and they've all kinda said, okay, well, you wanna look at tax credit reformation? Then we wanna be a part of that discussion and maybe there's another way where we can reduce our tax liabilities and some other, one of the other taxes.
Exactly, if you defer a tax liability or.
It's just liability in general is what they're looking for, yeah.
Rockwell has always been, the, the registered publishes those top ones, so everybody knows those. But just to realize too, that on research and activities, there are a couple dozen C-Rapids companies that benefit or metro area companies that benefit. A lot of the, like, what would be your favorite companies? We can find that list. You may not realize that they have three or four research jobs on their payroll and they might get, you know, thirty thousand dollars of tax credits. They're keeping those jobs here. They're also the most, they're the easiest jobs to transfer anywhere, right? You can do RME. You can do R and D for many, you know, for many desks in the metro, so that's what, that's what I'm sorry.
But I still think it's our responsibility as legislators to make sure that that tax credit is going to grow. And so we need to set criteria, I'm not saying standardized criteria, but to follow them up, right? And that's our responsibility to make sure that what they say is happening, that they can prove it to.
And we, I absolutely agree with that. It's why we focus on the seven. There's a couple of economic development tax credits that are dominant, a couple of the brand ones that have been used, we don't have plausible evidence that the biometric credit has ever worked, nobody has, nobody has leverage on that yet. So that's intentionally not addressed because I'm only gonna fight for the ones that we can show have very real, very favorable return on investment. I agree with that, because we, we have to be accountable to that.
And there's a huge rate to that factor to us, so are these tax credits being used at thirty percent rate, fifty percent rate? Are they very popular, like the commercial money tax? The cut, you know, is how, how much is that? And so you don't know until you're there, right? So, so I think in looking at this or looking, making audits, you know, looking at a audit and saying, well, okay, this is declining, people aren't using this or businesses aren't using this and is it needed, is it necessary right now? So that's part of the conversation.
Well, we could talk about topics all afternoon it seems, but we sat this meeting for an hour and we're done. I know everybody probably set the rest of their day's schedule around this meeting being an hour. So I would like to thank Mayor Hart and all the city council and all of our legislators and everyone else that's here for coming. And we really think we gotta make this at least an annual event with our legislators and maybe orally with each other. It's a good, good exchange of ideas and I really appreciate that. I wanted to say though, for years there's been a board supervisor liaison on the city council and there is now a city council liaison on board supervisors. So let's hope that, and that's Ben Rogers, and let's hope that they can at least.
You just got volunteered.
Let each other know what's going on.
Thank you, Detective.
We've been here, concerned with the delegates, thank you for what you're doing for us. You've done some good work. When we can help, there are things we should be doing, please let us know. I'd like to thank everyone.